Order of business is public comment, three minutes maximum per speaker. There's a sign up sheet if you don't mind putting your name and address on there. Make it easier for the clerk. Would anyone like to speak? Amy?
Good evening. Amy was 10:30 to drive. I apologize I haven't been here for the other special meetings and just scheduling is not allowing me to be here. I just wanted to make a statement for what it's worth that in light of where we are today, the position that this town is in, that stems from things that occurred a number of years ago that came to light almost a year ago. I feel it's kind of disheartening and unfortunate that it's become a political divide in our town. It should not be a political divide. This is not a Republican situation. It's a Democrat situation. It's a town situation. I've been saying that since day one. I mean, our last first select person who I asked resigned for over a year and she finally did. She was an R, I'm an R. It was never about politics. It's always about the morals and integrity or the lack thereof that she possessed. And the lack of things that she did for this town as a whole. I firmly believe the interim whoever's decided upon, although if I was a betting woman, I'm going to bet that Bob and Gina are not going to agree and will see a petition. Career, whatever person has to be the right person to do what's right for the town. So, that's what I'm going to say.
Anyone else wish to speak? Who's in the room? If I missed you, yell out. How about anybody online, public comment? Yeah, I think they can unmute themselves, right? You can unmute yourself if you want to speak. That's anyone. We got an email from Nancy Spagnano.
Yeah.
You want to read it? She requested that it be read.
Sure.
He's also online if she wants to read her own.
Yeah, um, I don't know if she wasn't maybe not able to make it or or thought she couldn't make it. Now that she's here, I don't know if she wants to make the public comment herself or.
Nancy, if you can hear, if you want to, um, you, you want to give your own public comment?
It's possible that she's not, um, I mean, I'm happy to read it. Yeah. I'll time myself.
Yep.
Um, okay. Mr. Britton and Ms. Texera, it's very disheartening to see the selection of an interim for selectmen being reduced and diminished to an issue of party politics. After what this town was put through over the last year due to misplaced loyalties, skewed priorities and ego, wouldn't it be refreshing to put the best interests of the towns residents first? All of them, not just the ones within our next to their names on the voter list. Let's be clear. The, the position in question should not be about ideological grandstanding. Most of the opportunities for that are connected to the budget process and that is complete. Politics surrounding the upcoming election in November should be handled off the town's time as a matter of ethics. That is therefore, there is therefore an appointment for a handful of months. This is therefore an appointment for a handful of months to keep town business moving forward and crucially to help the town begin to heal. Party affiliation should be the last thing anyone is looking at outside the process outlined in the statutes fulfilling the first selectman's position after Paul's resignation. Instead, it's being held up front and center as the only qualification that truly matters. Didn't putting political considerations ahead of best practices help to put us in a situation in the first place? The role of a first not giving business and it isn't like running a department. And having established relationships with those agencies and knowing who to call is vital. Strong town leadership is not about all you can do on your own. Often it's about building a strong team to address issues and knowing what to ask of each, each of them to do. Strong town leadership is about letting elections end after the votes are counted and focusing on the town rather than constantly trying to score points for the next election. Cycle is off as soon as the poll close. As soon as the polls close. I know that's an unpopular, unpopular opinion. I'm not saying there's no place for politics in government, but I'm saying that this specific decision is not one where politics should trump anything else. Leave that for the upcoming election and focus on appointing the most qualified person to do the people's work in the meantime. The role should not be viewed as an opportunity for a candidate to get on the job training. This town has dealt with enough and deserves better. Carol has managerial experience plus many professional connections with the local, regional, state and federal entities that she would have to interact with as first selectman. She has indicated that she will not seek to run for first selectman in November if appointed, meaning that her focus will be on the needs of the town and not on a candidacy. She also has a strong legal background, which while not a requirement, is certainly helpful in navigating the quirks of government. The town is lucky to have someone so clearly qualified and with a solid understanding of what the scope of the role is. Okay.
Are you almost done?
Um, can we put politics back in November? And, and I think that's it. That's it. That's good.
That is Nancy Spagnano. Any other comment?
I don't have her address here, but we'll get, we'll get it for the record.
All right. If there's no other public comment, we'll move on to minutes. Want to do them individually or?
Yes, let's throw them into shows if you don't mind. Yeah.
Um, I was very efficient and put July on this thing, but it's June. Uh, the first one was June 3rd. I had one. That was, um, under item 3B, uh, approval minutes of the May 6 meeting. It says that we, um, the amendment was to change the word grant to negotiate. But that, that wouldn't actually make sense. And that's not what they did with the approved minutes. It was to change the words uh, enter into, into negotiate. And the, uh, the improvement is that got filed in the town clerks are correct. Just the report of it, um, it's not correct.
Okay.
That was the only question I had on those.
June 3rd, let me look at June 3rd. We have, if you look at item nine. Papers that are purchased. The policy for parking rep, we, um, talked about how um, the fact that we really liked the new director's, um, two amendments to the policies. But if you see, there was one thing, um, this talks about the only amendment that we had being, you know, replacing the word molestation, but we also said that we were gonna delete the legal guardian section of the, um,
Parents going into bath.
Right, right.
Bath.
Right.
Didn't feel that that was appropriate for the employee, employee policies.
Right.
Really get to more into rules and regulations for the
Right.
The town buildings.
So.
Because having an employee sign it, it won't make parents hear differently.
Right. So, I, I think it would be.
So we should add add that to the
Yeah.
summary.
Right.
How would you like to phrase that?
Um, there was an agreement to delete the quote legal guardian, close quote section of the, it was one of the additions. I can't remember if it was attachment A or B, um. I think it was A because B was the child abuse indicators.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we didn't make changes to that. I don't, I believe we didn't.
Right.
Was it A? Yeah, yeah, A. So amendment A. Thank you. Um, I think it was the legal guardian section, uh, amendment A. Anything like that. I think, I think it'd be pretty clear because it wasn't not a long document. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I rethought it.
Um, I don't, this is going a little off topic, but I don't have anything else for June 3rd, but last regular meeting, we talked about um, I noticed how I noticed that there were minutes missing from March, March 10th. And I looked and they're there. So, so.
They're being on the website?
Yes, yeah.
So maybe they, they got, you know, remember if they got.
I, I was in that conversation, um, but if you leave the.
The only, the only thing missing from the March 10 emails is that, I'm sorry, minutes is that, um, the, I had an attachment to those minutes and that my request was approved, but the minutes are there with an attachment.
Okay.
So if we could. Okay, and then just email if you need it again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A document in the morning.
Just about the June, June 3rd minutes?
It was, uh, no, it was March 10th.
For one of them.
It's actually March 10th.
Who's at this one? Oh.
It was the March 10th. They were approved in April, I think at the regular meeting.
Okay.
So it's not here. I'm just, I just don't want to forget that we talked about this last, last time where I noticed that the meeting minutes were missing and I think we all looked for them and we could find them.
That is a separate note.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Gina noted that the March 10 meeting are posted on the local website, but uh, missing and attaching them. And then those two corrections, uh, 3B and nine, are there any further corrections?
No.
All right. Unanimous consent?
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
All right.
So motion for second and unanimous consent.
Yeah. Uh, June 9th. Oh, we not have any corrections on that.
Um, I think there was something on 3A. Let me just find it. 3A. Would like to have each candidate introduce themselves. I'm not really sure what that means because I think that day it was just Sal. Do you remember?
I, I think I said, I think I said that, uh, all nominees should have an, you know, should introduce themselves in, in all that thing. Talking about the process.
Okay, well, it's minor. I would say just leave it, don't leave it like, leave it like that. Um, so motion to accept the minutes?
Second. On favor?
Unanimous.
Yeah, unanimous. June 12th.
I have a couple of questions. Did you have any on June 12th?
No.
3A, um, the, the minute that's read, select woman Texera spoke to the town attorney on Tuesday, uh, June 10th. And for their conversation, if both selectmen are at an impasse, both can ask the town clerk to have a 10 day, the 10 day clock start to notify elected officials. Selectman Britton disagrees with that interpretation of the statute. Um, okay, wait a minute. I think that's right.
Yeah, and obviously there's something.
Yeah, I, I do want to say for the record that, um, I sent an email to the town clerk and to Vin summarizing this discussion that we had on June 10th and asking Vin to comment and to date he has not responded. Unfortunately, um, you know, I let me just. Okay, if you go to, um, section C, little I.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we were talking about, you know, when boards and commissions have a vacancy, usually people just vote party lines. And at that time I asked you, um, I asked, it, it just doesn't really, it's not really. Um, I asked, I asked you whether or not you, your intention was to, that you would only vote for a Republican. I, I mean, I didn't, I don't think I said anything about being honest, um, or voting against people. I just wanted to know for fish's sake that if that was your plan, that we could, that information would be useful to me and we could move on instead of, you know, trying to to go on a useless, um, exercise, um. Wait, I asked whether you had uh, you know, uh, whether your intent was to vote only for a Republican. And you replied that, that, that no, that, that that wasn't the case.
Right. So how would you like, do you feel this needs to be rephrased?
I mean, I just think it's the episode where I was asking you whether you, you believed it had to be a Republican in, in the interim position.
So what did you say? Selectwoman Texera asked Selectman Britton if he was only going to vote for a Republican?
Right. And, and if that were the case, then, you know, we could in terms of efficiency, you know, I, I didn't that we didn't have to have an exercise where I would, you know, invite someone to talk to you if you knew that you wouldn't vote for them. So I said something about efficiency and, um, I asked if you, if that was your intent to only vote for a Republican.
Okay, we'll change I to, um, Selectman Britton, if he was only going to vote for a Republican.
Right, right, yeah, that's fine. Like that, I think if, yeah. Um, and then if you go to F, I talked about, um, that I said that between the two candidates, Carol and Sal, um, I advocated for Carol and I mentioned that, um, her numerous roles in town hall. Um, the fact that she knew the employees, her legal background and her involvement in the community. I also said that she has committed to not running in the November election.
Do you want to add that?
Yeah.
After F?
Yeah.
Selectwoman Texera stated that goals were committed to not running in the general of the November election.
Right.
Right, if you, if you don't know what, because I know I've, I've taken minutes before it's, I mean, if you want to repeat anything.
Okay.
Because we're just talking and
Yeah.
not thinking about the clerk.
Right, right. Thanks.
Just say, uh, so I've been, I've been at meetings where like people talk for an hour drifting, go, let's do that. Yes, I move, I'm second. And the clerk is like, could you just go back and say what that is?
Yeah. Do you need us to repeat anything so far?
No.
Okay, okay.
Further, um, were there amendments to June 12th?
That's all I have. Motion to accept as amended.
Second.
I.
Unanimous approval.
Yeah.
July, it's, uh, June 18th.
June 18th.
I didn't have any, um,
You know, if you look at, um, if you look at for executive session, um, it says that you moved, you made a motion to move into executive session to discuss the selection, Carol and Sal, and we didn't, it wasn't, it was, I think it was Sal that day.
Correct.
Yeah, so we should strike.
Strike Carol.
Strike Carol, not literally.
I think, uh, yeah, and I think there's a typo in the general statute section.
Um.
Says it on the agenda. The six is in parentheses.
Where's that?
Oh, right above, right above the, uh, we made that correction is discussing interim, first like one pursuant to general statute, one dash 200, it says 2006, but the six should be in.
I don't see that.
Is there?
Oh. Oh, I see. Yeah, definitely. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we should add that too. Did you get that? It's in 4A. The, the six, um, Connecticut general statutes, one dash two zero zero six is in parentheses.
Okay.
And those corrections, any, any others?
No, move to accept as amended.
Second. Manus approval.
Manus approval.
Right, from the last one was 326. Didn't have importance. Yes.
I, I mean, if you look at three, it's in the middle of the paragraph that Leslie received a form. It changed the primary contact from Cofrancesco to herself. I, I didn't think, I mean, it's just sort of like, I don't know, we've.
Referring to the piece of paper we signed, right?
Right, right. But it's just like.
Or should it, instead of state, should it stay up as a policy and management?
I mean, I, I didn't, this, we, we talked about, you know, I mean, Leslie sent in the form, it was rejected. Um, you know, there was an email of, um, there was an email where, um, you know, where Leslie asked them to update the primary contact. They probably didn't know about the resignation, um, but I mean, it, it sort of reads like they sent Leslie a paper and said, sign this and what, you know.
Say, the last sentence talks about how the seat will only accept, uh, they would accept signatures from the remaining members, but it also wanted the minutes.
I guess, I guess this is, this is what my concern is. It says that she, we received a form to change the primary contact from Paula to Leslie, but that's not what they did. They don't know who the primary signer is going to be. They didn't say, here's the form so you can change it to yourself. It's not what the direction was, right? Because if you Bob wanted to be the primary signer, it would have been you. Like the state isn't dictating who's signing the form. Like that's not accurate here. So I think if we could just, we could just say that Leslie received the form to change the primary contact period. I think that would be better.
Yep. Straight.
So do you see what that is in another sentence there? Um, just end it after primary contact.
Further corrections?
That's it.
Okay. Move on.
Uh, I second.
Unanimous approval.
Unanimous approval.
I bring this up, the tax refunds and, uh, check the fastest hand in this. One with that, two, I guess there are two refund requests. One to a 3823 and one for $184. For access payments.
Those standard.
Yeah, now do those require signatures also on the?
So she said, if you guys are okay with it, you could sign it, I'll give it back to you.
Okay. Want to sign? You have a pen handy?
That's, uh, we will. Request for tax refunds presented by the tax collector.
Second.
On favor?
I.
Manus.
Move.
There's a missing. Fine, yeah, awesome.
I can do this. Yes, ma'am.
Item is for cemetery deeds, we would receive one to Joyce Christian Graves, three and four can roll up of section C. They're $1,600. Assuming that, uh, all's in order. I mean, pretty much we have to trust that the grave sites are available and.
I, um, can I just ask, um, who, do you know who prepared this, um, with Joyce's name and just this one? Do you know?
Don't, do you know who does the cemetery deeds?
So, the town clerk makes up, well, handles the dean part of it or either, I'm so sorry. I think Paula ended up writing up the dean and then Royal has him. But this just, I don't know if you can add it. It's a regular schedule meeting, but if in lieu of not having a first selectman who's a second, um, moving forward, you know, it gets kind of difficult to navigate the cemetery situation.
Well, I mean, I.
Set up for right now.
Well, but what I wanted to ask about is, I mean, can we, I mean, it's almost a month since Paula's gone and like I, I just don't know why her name is here. Could we just have this rewritten so that her name isn't there?
That was probably written while she was still here, is my guess, is, is it was made in.
Yeah, so I guess we'd approve the cemetery, didn't authorize the first selectman to sign it. Obviously we have to fill the correct name and then it's a correct name or.
I mean, the statute has to be in like Word somewhere. It's so easy to just take a name out and just leave it as, or either blank or, you know, or board of selection or something, um. I just, I don't really feel comfortable with her name on this when she's been gone a month. You know.
Wait, so we don't.
You know, just convert it, change it and send it back and then you can do whatever you need to do with it.
I would, I think that would be great.
I can leave it if you don't mind. Can we sign checks?
That would be great. Yes, yeah.
Can, can it wait? Or you mean we'll approve it?
Approve it. Sign it when you sign the checks. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And also amend the document.
That sounds.
All right, then let's just move approval of the sale of those graves, three and four, now F, section C to Joyce Christian.
Second. Yeah.
I.
I.
Manus approval. Okay, and then just that the, then it'll be set up for both of our signatures, I guess.
Maybe even as soon as tomorrow, right?
I'll, I'll do it for any morning, but if you, if you wouldn't mind, because I'm not, Will's not here. Um, if you could just forward that back over to me because I think that's.
Oh, just cemetery? Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, do we have it worded or?
I mean, I could convert it and send it over.
I, I think it's not, it's not hard to convert. I just, they just don't have the actual document.
That brings us to reappointing of town officers and board and commission members whose terms expire on June 30th. So these are all terms beginning 7-1 and there was in a, there's a list in the um, meeting packet. Talking Betsy Quist, assessor. Chantel Hendricks for cemetery commission. Chantel Hendricks, who are cemetery commission. Uh, conservation commission. Scott Keely and Patricia Weiner. Um, constables, Jason Edmond, Todd Gillette, Richard Deacon, Mark Jowzinski, Mark Shepard. Economic Development Commission, Stephen Winter. Inland Wetlands Commission, Nicholas Downer, Chris Sullivan. Kedrick Ecker, Paul Mangreno. An alternate. Uh, QVHD Board of Directors, Carol Goldberg and Elizabeth Thornquist as an alternate. Um, and I think the next page is, uh. Next page is just for our information, the couple of witnesses that have to be made by the first black one, so those would have to vote. Uh, since these were, uh, we were told that everyone has been asked if they want to be appointed and said yes. And I don't know if it is issues with them, should we just approve all the appointments or are there any ones yet?
I'm happy to approve them all together.
Okay, then that's.
So we are talking about the yellow highlights.
Yes.
Yes, yes, I'm happy to mo- make a motion to approve. Uh, the, the appointments on this page.
Does that help you as a clerk?
Yeah.
I have the copy here, if you want. Patch it to the.
Um, I'm just thinking for efficiency sake, Ben, do you have an opinion on whether or not Bob can move forward and approve? The, um, others, the Comcast Cable Advisory Council and the hearing officers?
I think that, I think they were left as, um. First, their first selectman appointments and the ordinance.
And, and your.
This, this is on the list of who's reported to us.
Right, any ordinance does not.
I, I don't have the ordinance in front, but I assume we just have to wait until the first.
Yeah, because the ordinance does not address what happens in the event of a vacancy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which, which we're in a unique situation, so I think we should wait until the vacancy is.
Okay, sure.
That's a Comcast.
The reason I asked is because in my opinion, Bob and I have the authority of the first select person and this is a minor thing and I think for efficiency sake, I'd be willing to. To take care of this technicality and move on.
Well, yeah, I don't. I haven't looked into that, nor have I been asked to look into that specifically, but I'm unaware of a statute that. Conveys the, well, delegates the authority to board in the absence of the first selectman. Generally, it's the first selectman is the chief elected official. And that's a specific office.
I'm happy to wait, I'm happy to wait.
I think the normal rule, unless there's anything specifically against it, is that the, uh, if someone's been appointed to an office, they continue that office. Until they replace. Or they resign.
Okay.
Those, because those are first select benefits anyway. That brings us to appointment to fill vacancies, um, these, these are not incumbents. The Parks and Rec Commission and Cemetery. Um, I suggest we do Cemetery Commission first.
Sure.
I think we both spoke with, uh, Dina Durley. Um, who's expressed an interest in the, um, Cemetery Commission, I understand it had ten to three meetings and. Came back again, so that's. Uh, I don't have, I don't have any issue with, uh, appointing her.
No, me neither. I, I would make a motion to approve her the appointment.
Second.
Unanimous, Dina Dur.
And then, uh, more difficult, Parks and Rec Commission has one vacancy and two qualified, uh, people, uh, Jean Pollock. A retired gym teacher who coached, uh, tennis, swimming and field hockey. Um, I think she said she was a waterfront or pool director for. Part of her career and tennis coaching was it. Maybe in other places, but was also at AMity after she retired from teaching. And Tracy Johnson, I believe, is here tonight, if she had any questions towards. Uh, a letter indicated that her kids participated in the after school program, summer camp, were counselors in the. And Rec and she's also was very involved in the, uh, PTL.
Right, one vacancy and two.
Vacancy two, which makes me think now, that's why the Park and Rec Commission said, you guys decide. Which we have more, more positions. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with either candidate, I wish.
I agree. I mean, it's just very random. I don't know if you say, you know, Tracy's here, maybe we should pick Tracy, I mean, I don't know. Right, right, you want to toss a coin? It's, it's, I wish we had one more slot. It's great when you have people in town who want to participate. Um, you know, so.
Want to go with Tracy's here?
I mean, it's. As good as, it's as good as. I mean, we have no basis really, you know, it's too good candidates and people willing to, to, to work for the town, so. Um.
Any, uh, any suggestions from the commission chair?
Um, I.
You had the same issue.
So I honestly, that was the one meeting I have not been able.
Okay.
Um, I think that they are both equally qualified, um. I think there was a lot of scrutiny about the original appointments, which was why we felt like it should be up to the board of selectmen to. Make this final appointment since the first route was so kind of scrutinized, um, so I believe it.
Any preference, Gina?
I, I, I really don't. I mean, I, I would say we should appoint Tracy or flip a coin.
I'll trade, I, I'll go with your suggestion, Tracy's here. And, uh, so we'll appoint Tracy. And keep Jean in mind as soon as there's another.
Right, 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 exactly.
They amend the ordinance to allow more members.
Second, I second your motion.
Unanimous approval.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I think we're up to report from Board of Finance regarding a proposed grants committee. I think they've had a couple of meetings.
Yes, we have.
You, Sharon.
Okay, this, um, this report is actually not from the Board of Finance, it's from an ad hoc. Committee created at the. By the Board of Finance because we had been trying for a couple of years to get. Town leadership to get this done because people have really wanted to have input into the grants process and. We felt that is from the Board of Finance and, um, there was definitely the need for a, uh. A standardized review process because we've found that things were overlooked, things came in after the fact, uh. The grants, one of the more common things is that I think almost all of the grants that got processed. Had some idea that there was some rate there that was going to do all the, all the monitoring and, uh. And the rest of, you know, internal reporting, compliance and so on, so, um. There needs to be a standardized process and some standardized content. Uh, what this ad hoc committee, which was formed, it had two people from the. Board of Finance and it had our finance director and our grant coordinator slash executive. Assistant, uh, because they had been doing most of the work and will continue to be doing. A lot of the work on this, um, and then we invited. Some members of the. Of other organizations, town organizations, that we were aware of, people who had expressed an interest in, uh. In being involved in, in the grant process, so. We have, because we are ad hoc committee, we sort of. Hold ourselves together, uh. We don't have minutes, uh, we have notes from the, from the two meetings that we held. We saw our job as being to come to, to you with the. The request or recommendation that you appoint a permanent woman. If, yes, I guess a permanent grant, grant committee and, and figure out what's. How you want it to work, but we have some, some suggestions, we had a lot of very free ranging discussion over. About some of the, the processes and, and things, again, things that got missed or. Or things that, uh. Were challenges for. For nearly everybody every time spent a grant, so. Um, we are, we, when we met last night, we. Settled on a recommended mission that of course we would expect you to, to modify as appropriate, but. A starting mission, the mission of the Town of Bethany Grant Committee. Is to responsibly and transparently solicit funding for projects that align with town's strategic objectives and goals. Using a defined review process, the committee will aim to support the town and organizations in addressing needs, challenges. And new opportunities. This, of course, uh, assumes that at some point there are strategic goals. That are, that are articulated and, and reached, but that, that this committee probably could work. Even before that, um, and we're recommending. That the, that there be a combination of a standing part of the committee based on roles and. And additions ad hoc depending on what, uh, you know, some, some people from the community. To help identify potential projects and also additional, especially in-house expertise that might be. Be required, um, we are suggesting that the chair be either. The second or third selectman. So that I know that you don't have a lot of extra time, especially now, but to represent the perspective of town leadership. Um, the finance director, a representative of the Board of Education. Um, a representative of the Economic Development Commission, the grant coordinator and. So those are all. People who would. Pretty much be there all the time because of their roles, but also, um, ad hoc, probably a paid. Outside, uh, grant advisor, someone who could help us through specifically. More difficult, more complicated grants processes, some of them can be handled in-house. Because there's in-house expertise and because they're not as complicated as dealing with federal, especially federal type grants and. And there are, there are all kinds of. Challenges that we've bumped up against in, in the process, um. We recommend that the chair of the committee make a monthly report to the Board of Selectmen on the past month's activity of the committee. And also that additional expertise of other town organizations or departments should be included when their expertise is. Appropriate, so that might be, for example, if, um, that we're anticipating some kind of a grant that would be supporting. Park and Recs, that obviously they would be part of. The committee acting there, uh, if we were looking at something that was specifically related to economic development. Um, opportunities that perhaps there'd be someone else from the Economic Development Committee or from the. Local business community, whatever it is and so on, but basically to get of a lot of things involved, public works projects, so. That would mean bringing in our public works and facilities director. So that we take advantage essentially of additional in-house expertise without requiring them to be at every single meeting. They would only have to be there in this. Their input was appropriate and required, um, we also recommend that the grant committee. Determine the standards for the review of proposals and for post-application. Internal reporting, monitoring, compliance and financial management and controls. There's a lot of paperwork. Required on an ongoing basis to the, the granting organizations. And we have to make sure that we stay essentially within the identified. Lines for every individual, um, individual grant and make sure that. All the monies are accounted for appropriately and so on. Uh, and attached to, just realize that you not have this. I'm, I'm sort of, I'm.
No, I'm good.
You're good here. So attached to this, it's just the notes from the two. Meetings that we, we have had and there are two samples of, um. Grant committee checklists that, uh, that Jen has pulled together. Uh, that from some searches and that she recommends as ways to think it through. But this is, this is going to be. A town policy and town review committee that's not for an ad hoc committee to, to determine this. Also, there's a draft of a grant submission form. That it would be helpful to put on the town website. And make available to people, maybe let people know in the bulletin that it's available. Where anyone, whether it's internal or external coming from the community, that people could, um, identify. Not necessarily that they know that there's a grant, but that they know that there's a project that. It would be nice to be able to get vacations and so that we, the, the committee could try to help them. Uh, find money and help them walk through that process. And last, at least the very last little page. There's, this, this one is a spreadsheet that would. A, um, is a draft, a sample of a, essentially a review checklist where. Uh, this would help the committee keep track of what's, what's in process, what, you know, what things are suggested. Contact people, what are the stages that things are in, so that at any point in time. You know where everything is because if there are. Multiple grants and even now we still have several of them in play, you don't necessarily know where everything is. And you don't want to lose track, especially of things like mandatory reporting dates. And so, and so with that, I turn it over to you on behalf of the ad hoc committee.
I was wondering, so the committee is comprised of the people you just, you mentioned and also people who responded to like the. Bulletin announcements, is that, or we didn't get any?
We got zero, zero responses. I think a half a dozen times at town meetings, I asked and Paula asked for people.
Yeah.
Who would like to, to help, but we had, well. I don't know, we had several people that we invited to participate and, um. In the end, not all of them were able or will, or it was no longer timing for them.
I was hoping those announcements would yield some.
Yeah, so will we. Because it would have been nice if we could have just, you know, two years ago, handed over to the Board of Selectmen. Here's a list of people who would like to do this and that, but that didn't happen, but it really is essential. That there be a formalized processing in town for this to happen.
Is there a grid like this that's been used for current deadlines or is it just? Well, I shouldn't ask, maybe.
I think this came into existence perhaps in the last forty eight hours, is that?
Because I'm the only one doing it, um, but, uh, there is a list, um, and it has what we've completed and the timeframe and. You know, we have quarterly reports that are due and annual reports that are due and, and when they're completed and finished, um, we get a report from the state that says that. I will add to what, what Sharon said as well, as far as like. I, first and foremost, I am the only one doing it and when you're only doing something, um, you know, there, there's more. Errors that could possibly happen and, but more importantly, uh, when we're dealing with federal grants, uh, you're talking about different affirmative action, um. uh, when we're dealing with federal grants, uh, you're talking about different affirmative action, um, your criteria, you're talking about, you know, big, 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 big laws, you're talking about, um, you know, prevailing wages and a lot, a lot of other things that come into play. And having somebody that may have a little bit more expertise in that as well, um, besides just a project manager, but also, um, the fact that, you know, part of, in in my job description is, is having a support for grants. Uh, and when I talked to Scrugg and they were helping me out, which they no longer have, they don't have only us one person to pay for. Um, even they were like, you're the only one over there doing million dollar grants, that's insane. And so it's something that we really, we've been trying to do for two years. So I just kind of want to throw that out there too, is that I don't mind doing them and I love doing them and I'm glad to get people money and I think that if we have an option for people to give more ideas as well, then we won't be picking um, when grants come our way, kind of what do we have that we can throw at it instead of we can have a plan.
Okay, thank you for the report. I think we should digest it and uh, play as a first slackman on board and then um.
I guess the only thing, um, the people on the committee currently, are they, I think that would like be interested in being appointed to a more formal group, or do you have a sense of what their interest is?
I'm not sure, I.
You'd have to ask everybody, I think.
Yes, I don't know if it's been discussed or if people are hoping it stays.
There are a couple of people I think very much would like to stay involved, but we also have a couple of people who agreed to help us get started. But did do not specifically do not want to be ongoing.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the recommendations were, a couple of the people are ex officio recommending that a couple of staff people be considered.
I actually, I want to point out the one thing, um, that you might be wondering about, and that's about the, the Board of Education. Representative, things that there are, there are a lot of um, that they already get a lot of grants on their own, but it would be really helpful if there was an integrated process because the full town is actually involved. I mean, when they get grants, they're still in the name of the town. And we should know about them. And also there are times when they may have needs, especially for infrastructure where over on this side of the, the campus, we're aware of grants that could be helpful to them that are not normally in there. Uh, things that they're necessarily aware. Also, just on a very small sample, very small, often it was, last year there was a and it was small, a very small state grant available for um, for things related to bicycle usage. Yep, and so economic development applied for one. And unbeknownst to them, to economic development, so did the school. And they would only give one.
I think.
Yeah, and it's there would be, have been no sense for economic development to have applied for that, knowing that the school was also applying and just, it's just like my duplicate effort and, but more than, more than that, it's the potential for um, additional grants, especially for infrastructure, that might be identified more from this, this side of the house, if you will, just because we have more infrastructure.
Did the school grant get negatively impacted to the other one?
No, they got.
They got, they got the bicycle one, the town did not.
They just told the town, you're, each town only gets one.
Yes, yes, the state told us. Right, it was very smart. You know, it, it isn't like it was a but we have seen um, opportunities, duties for HVAC infrastructure that we could have used for the school. It didn't necessarily matter what facility with in the town was the recipient of those.
Whatever was needed, right?
Right, but we did not know that need existed at the school at the time that grant was available. That's why we're looking to integrate.
Yeah, all makes sense for, for certain grants and, um, but it doesn't make sense to get everybody bogged down in the Board of Ed formula grants. I mean, they could just say, oh, here's our formula grants, but you don't have to spend any time on it.
Sure, it's more like if they need, if they have projects that, that are going to need money.
Right, so that we have
Rather than bond issue by being a different.
Infrastructure over there, then we own the building, we know about it. Right, but they, so we could have gotten money to do some of the work over there. And right now, I just talked to Kevin today and we're talking about ATRAC. And I said, you can tell me, you have things, I can find you things, tell me when they're happening. So if I can find him some money, that's less money that comes in that pair of dollars.
Anything else, Gina?
I think, yeah, that's good, thank you.
Item eight, Department Head Reports. Um, this is kind of a new thing for us, uh. It was mostly because usually Paula is here to tell us highlights of things, but uh, Gina suggested, you know, that we get Department Head Reports, uh, we didn't ask for it from every department, just that we'd start with a few. It's probably actually, it's probably a good idea to hear from people directly. Um, and our thought was, if people can come to the meeting, great, but if you don't really have anything that exciting to report, um, a written, a brief written report would be fine. Um, so I think most people came and uh, Don Che is on vacation, but I think he was online. You want to go first, Don, to get back to your vacation?
I'll go first. My internet is very unstable, like me, but that's okay, I'm out in the woods somewhere. So anyway, um, month was a, uh, June was a heck of a month. We, we, we between the parking wreck, trying to get everything back together for the annex, they did a wonderful job. Um, that's up and running, we rebuilt pretty much the entire interior of the annex, it was was in bad shape after um the year of being Owen the Lodge, the exterior, we had the exterior all painted, we're trying to do the parking lot, knocked the tree in the middle. Get rid of the island. Uh, right now, it's that time of year to start paving again, so we've been in the process of doing drainage work and things like that to get ready for paving. July, we're gonna start, we have Telcon coming in, we're gonna pave however many roads we can get done with the one that you guys graciously gave us. Uh, we're almost done with the, our paving project that we began about eight years ago. Uh, we're pretty close to covering all the roads. A lot of, a lot of drainage issues uh, with all the crazy rain we've been getting and, you know, washouts and things like that. We're trying to redesign some of the roads, adding curbing and adding more drainage work, so we don't wash out all the sides of the roads and things like that. Uh, but so far, so good. You know, trees, a lot of tree issues, you know, the, the ash trees and a couple of trees coming up, we're gonna have to spend some money eventually, quite a bit of money on tree work. Uh, but so far, so good. I mean, you know, we're doing the best we can, we're trying to that we have till the end of the year, we don't mind giving money back, because if something happens, trees fall down, we get a storm, then we have issues, so, so far, so good.
Okay, any questions for Don?
I, I just was wondering if there's anything that you think is a challenge right now, or anything that Barbara could do to help?
Um, not really. I mean, as far as, as far as the, the grants and things like that, we just, um, the last month, we did three of the bathrooms. We have two to go. Thursday, we're starting all the sidewalks in the front of the building, where we do all the sidewalks. Um, we just redid the stage about two weeks ago, we had the stage refinished, we're putting up new stage curtains, the gymnasium and the audio video project is pretty well complete. So, you know, till the money runs out, we're in good shape.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Don. You're welcome to stay or you can talk to your vacation.
Well, back to the pool, bye.
All right, uh, who'd you like to do next? People from Park and Rec here, do you want to take? Parks and Rec, the ball?
Sorry, I'm doing this on the side, so it's not. Sorry.
So next month, if you want to just say like a, a three liner email to us, that's fine. It looks like you put a lot of effort into this, thank you.
And I brought some team members also that Um, so, obviously. So we're just gonna discuss a little bit of what's going on in the department, summer camp before and after school, and some future programming that we'll be doing. Uh, so some of the improvements we've done, things that Don, with the annex filling in, getting the interior cleaned up and repainted. Uh, each room now is themed, instead of being age-based, where they just kind of put like forty kids in a room. Each camp, uh, each room is themed, we have a game room, parterre classroom, activity room, and a home room room, so the kids do get to rotate and do different activities throughout the day. Uh, we constructed a nurse's um, office in there, and I did. Um, so the nurse is now stationed in that building, which is very convenient uh, for the campers. During the summer time, we also got a new safety film, which will be installed on the window there, so that will buy us time, God forbid, there was an active shooter. There will be a new active play system in a sensory area in the activity room. And then all the parking wreck closets have been absolutely cleaned out and organized. A few things that we do not have on there, we did have pens and put it in a, but a veteran's park, keep kids contained in the area, especially if you put on their, our camp, uh, so they can't get out to the um, the lake. Walk-in books and forms have been completely redone. We put in a behavioral action plan and uh, we also have a staff evaluation process that we've been split. So this is a picture of some of the stuff that's gonna be in the active rooms. Hopefully, when we do, deliver shortly, and we do have other things that are currently for them to use. So we have about seventy-two families uh, registered, so as you see, those are the numbers that we have for the weeks. About twelve counselors, um, we have about eighteen kids in before and after care out of those campers that we have. All counselors have been background checked, fingerprinted, they sign uh, new employee handbook. And they all have to have their physicals and also sign the Bethany Town Hall. Anders, parents had to fill out a lot of forms, that was so much fun collecting all these forms. Uh, but we, we also put a nice manual for them together, that they had to sign that they read with their children. Um, they have provided tons of medical, physical forms, authorization uh, medicine, camp waiver, uh, actually, which is the YW waiver, some to me of uh, authorization, pick a form, voter release, and emergency contact. All have been collected. Um, most importantly, the staff training, uh, we did, we were fortunate enough to have TCF coming to do in-person training with all our staff. Um, Bethany, uh, fire department was kind enough to give us CPR first aid training. All the new counselors, so Savannah, Jonah, a few others, had EpiPen training, and then Mike and I also got administration training, just in case the nurse wasn't there, we can provide, we can buy medicine if we need. Uh, obviously, I went over all the camp policies and procedures with the kids. Then gave it lots of time to do a de-escalation training for them, and then Jen Carvasso was nice enough to get us on line training for all the stuff we needed. As you could see, we put a monthly schedule together, each week there is a theme, so every day there's something special for the kids. Uh, so, and then every Friday we do a, a big activity with them. So that's kind of what counts, I see it. And then it is very structured, um. So each grade has a daily schedule that they follow. Every fifty minutes, they rotate to a different activity, but that's the next kind of three slides.
You want to talk about anything or we just going to?
I'm gonna let these guys talk. They're part of my team and they're the ones actually doing it.
Yeah, um, so it's definitely a lot more structured this year. Um, I think that's good for counselors and campers. Uh, it allows us to like move through with them much more steadier. Uh, we have plans, we have backup plans if we need something else to do, um. Overall, it's just, it's a lot better for the kids, it's a lot better for the campers, uh, that knowing what we can do, like to help them, we can but it's, it's just a lot more, it's a lot, it's a lot more structured, it's, yeah. More structured, it's a lot better for the kids, it's a lot safer, um, we know where they are at all times, we have staff with them at all times, um. If any of them have to say go to the bathroom or anything, we have counselors with them. They're never gonna be out of eyesight where something, God forbid, could happen, um.
And one thing we did differently too, if you'll see sports and like arts and crafts, so we actually have a, a specialist, so Savannah's art specialist and then uh, Jackson is our sports specialist, so they plan the program and accounts, and get the counselors to support the program.
So, um, as Nicole mentioned, hi, I'm Savannah, I'm the um, arts and crafts specialist for Park and Rec this year. Um, and I just, to reiterate what Jonah said, it is so much better for the campers and counselors, structure-wise. I, I know most of us here either have kids or know how to work with kids. And, um, we all know that if a kid's dysregulated, it's going to be a big problem for both them and those who work with them. Um, and having this set and stone structure, having these kids knowing what they're doing throughout the day, having options, uh, like letting them know that they have a choice in what they can do, but at the same time, knowing that this is a strict schedule is so helpful for the counselors and the campers. Um, and also from a specialist standpoint, getting to do our own programming for the summer has been such a huge help, because it's not like a whole plan where, but a whole summer's worth of planning is being thrown at you, you know exactly what you're getting into, you know exactly what you need to be prepared for. Um, and it's just so much better for the counselors and from a safety standpoint, uh, we have security cameras. And I think one of the biggest um, helps to counselors and the kids is having the nurse inside the annex at all times, um, is so much simpler to get a child medical help, God forbid they need it, um. And having the accident incident reports on hand with the counselors at all times in their first aid backpacks uh, has been super, super helpful, and I think Nicole and Mike are doing a great job, we're a pretty good team.
Yeah, so also each, each lead has a backpack that is completely supplied with first aid, uh, whatever they need, and also activities for kids, so it's getting distracted, they have a kind of toolkit to go to, to keep those kids entertained. Um, that's one of, one of the things, uh, we also, with the specialists, they had to put together a weekly program of what they were gonna do presented to Mike and I. So that is, that's, that was, it's helpful for everyone, so we kind of know what supplies we need and know what to do. Uh, one thing that I want to go back on is uh, the training. So these guys also went to uh, a training at Southern Bowl Campus Challenge. And I want to just say how proud I am of my staff, because I'm gonna be honest with you, I wasn't, so they had a training session, but there was a competition at the end, and I'm like, do you guys really want to do it? Because we are young staff and we're going up against these big towns all over the state, are we really ready for this? We kind of just threw all of this together. Guess who won the competition? Guess who won the competition? Why don't you guys tell them a little bit about what you guys learned there?
Uh, yeah, so basically, it was a, essentially a giant, like, informational training session with a bunch of different other camps and programs from around Connecticut. Uh, we did, there was a bunch of different classes that you could take, uh, a bunch of stuff about engaging the kids, activities you could do with them, uh, behavioral training. And de-escalation, uh, just a lot of programming and, uh, information that's really helpful to us to, you know. Help get better with these kids, communicating, de-escalating, and just giving them, uh, the best someone that they can have.
Yeah, um, I want similar thoughts, this is Jonah, uh, we did first aid training there, um, we did behavioral management, and we did, um. Like how to be a good leader, and also we learned a lot about prevention, uh, because. And like we, uh, DCS al- also did mandated reported training with us. Uh, and like knowing how to stop something before it gets worse is a big thing that we learned about. Uh, and then. Having positive reinforcement with kids who are having behavioral difficulty. Was one of the big things that we learned about in one of the classes at Southern. Uh, so, like, if a kid, like, a kid doesn't feel necessarily like they're getting in trouble, it's more like working with the kid. To grow past having behavioral issues, and it leaves the kid feeling a lot less. Upset about the situation and more, okay, I'm ready to move on with my day, which is helpful to everybody. But, you know.
Let me just add too, um, from the commission's perspective, we are super, super grateful to Nicole and Mike. And to all of the counselors for their tireless work, it has been huge and very clear. Um, but we all knew they were doing it, and dug our heels in, and, and got, you know, a little elbow grease in there. Um, so truly, the entire commission deserves a lot of accolades, there were people who came on weekends and planted flowers and came and helped. You know, closets over April breaks, um, it has been a real team lift, um, and the feedback so far from families. And this has been overwhelmingly incredibly positive, kids who don't want to eat breakfast at home because they just want to get to camp. Kids who are so excited to hear about the water slide and the water play activities. Uh, my own two children won't be there until August, because they are up in Maine, and for the first time ever, they did not want to go to our lake house. Because they got to see, uh, Park and Rec at the meet the counselor night, um, that Nicole held last week, and they were just mad. Because they weren't going until August, um, so truly, a huge thank you to everyone who's been involved. Um, you know, it was something that our town needed, and it's, I'm gonna be really proud of, so, yeah, and the support that I thought the commission has been. And we're not done yet.
That's it, okay. So before and after school, we just worked on the next, so, uh, we decided that as commission meeting, that we're gonna do a survey to the families. And see what their needs are for before and after school, um, and vacation, and early dismissal, so we're hoping to get that out. This, this, this weekend, and then by, hopefully, the mid-July, we'll have registration up and running. Also, uh, we are working on a grant with the school, uh, that will hopefully. We will receive and possibly subsidize some deposits for that program.
Nicole, can I ask a question? Will, will the, the grant be needs-based at all? Um, I'm, I'm just, I just.
So Cheryl and I have been going back and forth on how, how we're gonna use that, we really have, we've been trying to wait to see if we got it. Makes it, but it will probably be somewhat based on, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then just some future programming, we'll also probably do a survey on that. Uh, already working with someone on some pickleball lessons, so we held that veterans park, we did a baking class and want to continue that in the fall, we met with a karate instructor. Um, also met with a education program who does some, like, little vendors, engineering, finance clubs for kids. I know that, uh, there were some fitness classes we discussed to bring them back, and yoga, and also trying right now to find the time to introduce them. That's kind of what we've been working on.
Um, I know when you got hired, you were already. It was already kind of on the late side for the summer camps, that was your first priority, and then working on de-forced to after school, and I. I think you said you're not gonna worry about the, the lake and lifeguards this year, just too much to try to do, and hard to hire lifeguard. Thought to, to get that in place for next year, or?
Yes, I've been meeting actually with, uh, other directors, so. I've been trying to send as many, uh, C R P A meetings as possible, at some really nice, um. Our current directors that have lakes, and they, they have some great ideas that what we can do for the lake back here, some pretty cool stuff, so I look forward to. You know, to get that way through, up and running and sharing some fun activities for families.
All right, it's still open for swimming, it's just.
Yes.
You're on your own knowledge.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll be getting some new signage over there, working on getting all the socks over there, cleaned up. Just with the rules and the regulations.
Yep.
Um, I have a question about the cameras, um. How, how do they, how do they work? Do, do, do they require someone to see something real time, or can someone review after the fact?
The park and rec camp?
Yeah.
They do report, right, yeah?
I mean, I haven't gone back to, that's something I have that off, so how they're set up in the system is that they're on a, they're basically on a server, in our server room. Um, and I don't know what it was set for as far as, like, how long out, but they are recorded. Um, I believe the, the conversation that was had with Dawn, at least right now, until everything else gets solidified with the construction, was thirty days. Um, I have requested ninety days, because that's typically what you need for workers' compensation, so I'm hoping that we get there. Um, but, uh, they all are recording, um, and, uh, Nicole has access. Uh, Dawn has access, I have access, and then the first selectman would have had access. Um, and so any of us, but it's, it is more of a retro thing, right? I mean, it's, it's not somebody sitting there. Monitoring a camera all day long, it's, it's more of, hey, you're being reported. And if, you know, something were to happen, or to go missing, or anything like that, we can go back to the cameras, but nobody is, is twenty-four seven monitoring those all there. Well, could we, could we have some monitoring? Because I just, I think at a previous meeting, I talked about, uh, a situation where. Um, the firm, the previous firm where I worked, um. Had a case against the state for not monitoring, and it was a very serious abuse situation that everybody missed. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting that's gonna happen here, I just think that some level of, of review might be what I did.
At this second, those monitor up on my computer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so if I'm like at my desk and work, the monitors are up.
I think it would be important, tell me if I'm wrong, but when I took my talk to Kerma though, it was that if you. Have them and you're saying you're monitoring them, you're more liable than if you say that they're available for review. So I, I would like to continue to reiterate that they're available for, for review, but we're not monitoring them.
I think from the commission's perspective, that's why we have like five council chief improve ratio, so that there is never an instance where there is a counselor alone. There are losing ball, but, uh, and then the cameras unused for review, which is often in line with, um, your public schools, the cameras are not monitored all day. They are there.
Oh, I'm not, I just want to be clear, I'm not suggesting that someone monitor every second of these things, I'm just saying that. Maybe thinking about some level of review couldn't, couldn't hurt, um. I don't know about what I'm saying, I'm gonna look into that. It, it seems, I'm gonna look into that. I read it was the same thing, it was, if you have them in the security office, then, then they're kind of liable to, to, that they're monitoring those monitors that are off on their screen, so.
Um, yeah, it probably should be a policy if there's an incident report or something where the, it doesn't get deleted after the thirty days, you save that. Section of tape if somebody gets hurt or anything like that.
Gee, I, I mean, I haven't passed you that yet here, but at the James, we're able to sit down with that incident, right, save it.
As if, you know, somebody might sue you.
Sure, that snippet, right, right, like same thing with workers' comp, or we have a whole different setup now for our, um. Our ballot box because of some of those statutes that came down, so. We can, we can work it, but I know right now they were still doing some construction, and with that, had some camera situations, and so it's not fully. Complete, the park and rec is functional, but as far as like how it's gonna be. And it's, it's gonna end up in the server room, I'd have to defer to Dawn, because she was the one that's working with the company. So do, do we know if we can save this snippet or not? You should be able to, I've never done it, I haven't had to. Um, I only had one instance that was in the parking lot about a year ago, and I was able to cut it and paste it in it, but I know that we've also. Kind of changed the system a little bit, so, but I, I know I can go in there, I know I can zoom in, I know I can stop it where I need to, um. And you can, you can edit kind of like what section you want to pull, so, um, it's just a matter of how it gets done. Do you think you could check this? I would have to wait until Dawn gets back, because he's the one that. Yeah, yeah, so as, when he gets back, be absolutely, so the companies, except that. Okay. Um, and I, I, you know, I'm assuming, and then you could correct me if I'm wrong, that the videos would be subject to FOIA. And that, that they should, no video should be intentionally deleted, is that correct?
Correct, and we. We should just verify with the, uh, retention policies that are set out by the state. Whether or not there's an obligation to retain them for longer than thirty days, now, because they, they would be, maybe they may be. Subject to FOIA, although I would think under FERT, uh, they, any video of children would be exempt from disclosure. Uh, but we should, I'll, I'll verify that, that in the agenda.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Park and Rec?
It can all be.
Thanks for very.
Thank you.
Uh, the building and land use.
Um, can you, can you just repeat that? I didn't hear what was expiring. Oh, right, okay, yeah.
And there is, uh. This discussion is on a date based on a, it's a public hearing, right, there. Tomorrow, um, for a possible, the exemption or modification. Carefully make, um. The regulations of this, um, of the. So that's one discussion has been, uh, taken based as tomorrow. Ongoing discussion. When a passing movement. This center, um. There was a public hearing official about it, there's an ongoing discussion between. Learning and zoning commission. Uh, at one point, in eighty-seven. Uh, economic development has also involved in discussion, the seminar potential review in the future. And that's ongoing discussion, um, that might end up in this in Minnesota, um, the collaboration with the communities. Um, the. Other thing that, uh, we also in discussion is the, um. Housing community, we have a housing community, it was a recent build, um, that is built support. Uh, by thousand or two. Um, that this has international forum of houses, and it was, and then they, they, they call them that. Cars in national, um. Be obliged to. To meet certain requirements for this, but at this point. Uh, this is still a session that is on a retail, a collaborative, excellent, that has been. That ADC is a particular, and then, and then it's only coming to them. Uh, how we're gonna be, develop any density in town to accommodate some sort of, uh. Still, other than, uh, towns, and I would do, following the last of the, uh. Going, but that's a, a discussion, so, that. The department in planning zoning commissions. Is overtaking, there's certain reviews of documents that need to project, how they run to the attention. Of the planning and zoning commission, who also that is going to probably come from. The core settlement, well, um, I guess, which is, uh, one is. Review nothing, uh, refund policy for the department. In, uh, have us in the planning zoning commission, to review the document, uh, to be the, or to the board of settlement. In the board of finances at some point. Um, and, uh, also the MS four, strong while management plan. Uh, and that is a quality management plan for the farm, that was, uh, took place in two thousand and seventeen. That it definitely is going to require review in this, uh. Long, uh, committee commissions to be charged over. Uh, going, uh, because of most, and it's focused, most, I want, uh, all under digital. And some, posing for the land use, department at some points. So it doesn't produce data, and it's only to require. I've got a required time and information reviews. Now, the P L C D, the ten-year review is coming up, so we are looking down, three years trying to review some. Bearing ourselves for that review, review maps, uh, regards to that. Uh, regards to other issues. We, you know, the, my department collaborates with all the departments and. Whether it's deputy W, whether it has to do with, well, that's, all it has to do with, uh. A complaints general, or. We, I received a lot of that consent, and if it escalates to a level that it's not going to be. Uh, it's, the, the procedures have been exhausted entirely, the seven, seven procedures have been exhausted. Then it's, it's a maze to a level of, okay, now it's required to, uh, town council to get involved. To, it's, to evaluate whether the procedures have been followed appropriately, and has been exhausted, whether your business become from a single manner. Or not, whether settlement involvement is going to be required to address certain situations, so. Uh, up to that point right now, we are in the unfortunate period of evaluations of accumulations, what hasn't occurred, what has not occurred. So the, so like the next steps of life, the things are in with, uh, several units that I have to look to. Dozens of heavy duty paperwork. Uh, in cyclones that have to go manually to review, to try to re, create a report. Yeah, on top of collaboration with the fire marshal and collaboration with the. Um, particularly in some units that came to like, uh, uh, on the. Unfortunately, I think that's where we are right now, in regards to, if they were to become a situation that requires council involvement, um. Reporting directly to, uh, some, or a segment, and all the procedures that have been followed, yet, something is, um. Something came up that's much more serious, and demands much more serious attention, or legal attention, and, and it's been brought up to the best. To refine and attention. But my report is, um, as, as well called, so we're seeing. Uh, even a wireless commission. On what ha- issues have been, might have, uh, occur, are reporting course to the planning and zoning commission. Might might have occurred, and maybe in relation to the, the discussions, um, the. Uh, collaboration, we use, we can't remember, we use to recount consult, depending on the situation, and then drop that to. Uh, one thing that also the community in the future is that, uh, I actually grateful that we received these, uh, monies for, uh, scanning. Uh, already, they do five of them. Um, uh, we have, uh. Studies of the senior sensation, they started the, yeah, all the building files have been skipped and are being skipped as they are being processed. So, so in that aspect, we are maintaining that constant, uh, workflow, or net, of. If, uh, all the. Property files being available and accessible on the computer system, digital, um, they're not yet online. Because always the risk of losing files, and it's also the humidity, it's clearly there was, and to, the, they, they, they place in order for them to be. And it happens to us because a lot of them still have some building information, some sensitive data that we do not really want to make it fully. Um, so this money is that I received, the department received for scanning is gonna. Allow us to complete this scanning of mostly the land's files. That it's in turn to kind of favorize the. Uh, having the full perimeter system. Which is um, it's gonna be the most beneficial tool that you're gonna most likely have. As town and townwide for services to your engineers, to your contractors, to their regular residents. Uh, and this is no systems that are gonna be very user friendly. But also not gonna secure the files, properties that are actually gonna be requiredness. With this election, which is. Is something that is requiring us. Before it has to maintain the data or documents for the lifetime. Only the knowledge, and that's what causes us to have this is tremendous amount of storage here in town. That we don't have capacity, we don't have storage capacity for more paper boxes and boxes of paper. Um, that now and not only that, we have also finding ways of storage in. Outside. So they can be maintained. As the, the state requires them, because then we fall into violation. The penalties, we do not maintain those documents as the state that we require, so. The department falls into a land, especially when the comments are attacking us and. But you will keep a digitize. We probably completely something changing of how we are doing. Someone who has the records and also the paper version. That's very fragile after many years of being stored away. As it get damaged uh from overuse every time everybody goes for. Then we could decide instead of. Opening a paper file, we just send in the digital version. Or they can access the digital version, if we have a program system. Which is gonna facilitate um agencies into enter uh. Collaboration. Um, if my, if us uh building issues, signatures required. So it's just gonna be there. Alerted that is the next person to review the entire file. Or the planner needs to be that they involve and alerts who's the next signature. And involves the whole process and requires, you will learn how we finalize the process. And time be manner, and what uh the step process is really aren't. In all these uh approval process and demand addresses, what a big dish. That's gonna be important uh in digitize there, so we're trying to prepare ourselves ahead. Think to the, to the next uh digitize. Steps in the department. Hopefully by next year, my, our goal is uh to have by the end of the year. Also uh the dangerous files in the time, so that becomes on file record in a digitized number of minutes. That's the goal.
Question, Gina.
No, I, I just wondering, it, I mean, at the end of the report, it says no immediate board of selection. Uh, board selection action required on enforcement unless escalated, has that happened ever or recently?
So, they are such a document that require label uh signatures from selectmen and uh town council. And actually, two have is in pending. Uh, uh, which is issue business uh. I have taken responsibility when we encounter. Uh, maps that have required business to be recorded or required business to be recorded. Then uh the property owner comes. To, to me to have the address of what he is meant to fall about. To acquire the signature requires a witness and uh special like the signature. In town council. Uh, so we, we start and per say. I could always wait until you elect a person, who's gonna be interim or who's a first selectment. Or I was speaking and the fact that I could always. Uh, modify the document as you were requesting before to modify the document to say for selectment. Name yourself and uh. Um, uh, it to sign all this document until we decide.
Do you have any documents that are pending right now?
I have about two documents.
Two?
Yeah, but it, it is not, it is, it worked on very urgent. And in the same way, Julia, um, but it's uh. It would be good to have it not later in this week. Because then it holds the, not because it holds the uh the sales, the sales of a property.
I mean, just, just so you know, Bob and I are gonna be probably tomorrow here. In the clerk's office, so if there are any documents need us to sign, we could probably look at it tomorrow. Um, just the timing of it works really well, you know, if, if you have anything.
That would be actually cool, because if it's simplified as that going to be able to sign without any. It could be possibly in the future, and it would be, would be forward to this. Person, because I also have to leave that on a dock.
Do you have any?
Thank you. Okay, there were, we've got uh. Finance and first selectman. Jen, do you have a long report or short report from that first selectman's office? I want sure, but if it needs to be long, make it long.
Really, okay, a bridge diversion, we'll do click them. Um, so finalized a lot of the contracts that we needed to get set up for twenty five, twenty six. So I'll set it like notice, you know, all of our kind of major services there that we need to get fixed. Um, personnel, I, I, at some point, uh, you're. If you're asking, since I'm sure one of the questions will be is how this like can support me going forward? And I do have some personnel issues going on that I, I would need some advisement um. Because that's something on like your first selection to handle. Um, evaluation, evaluation forms were created and distributed uh for mid-year and end year performance reviews and. I say performance reviews are really what they are is a, and at least this step is to try to start generating conversation. About goal setting and what that looks like and departmental goals. Um, so that way, when the board of finance meets for their budget. They start to have something to look at on, you know, where were their, their um, their benchmarks and did they meet those? And um I can have a different conversation when we come down to our budget hearings. Um, a training portal was set up, so we switched over, we used to use vector solutions through thermal. And it was, you know, it was very difficult to navigate the, the uh modules were really long, but you could skip them. So people were trying to let, I was seeing that they were done in two minutes and there were forty five minute modules, so I was like, maybe we'll look at something else. So I found one um that is actually, it benefited us, especially what was happening with Park and Rec. It's the same with the school uses, it's called G C N. Um, and what it does, it kind of has more of a, uh, it has a government component to it. But it also has things for school age children, so like one of the things that it had was playground safety and supervision. In there so that they, the counselors could do um a little module on that as well. Um, so they, everybody has been set up for that, they have until the end of the neck of this month, July first, to do that. Um, and then um with onboarding and hiring, um obviously we had a lot of interviews slash setup slash job descriptions. Um, just onboarding in general this month. Uh, especially with Park from Rec, including assistance with her job postings, including processes, onboarding documents. Reviewing her documents and handouts and agreements, whether that was just me with, with, then with, we had a lot of editing that was happening throughout June. Um, we also transitioned health insurance uh and health insurance. This is, so we went from Medicare to Anthem, so. So I handled both the B C S side of it and our side of it, so we could get going, so that our employees could have uh their health cards by July first. Um, I also provided them with educational support and handouts along with um having uh someone from Anthem actually do a. Uh, presentation for any questions they may have during the, the shift. Payroll and salary setup coordinated and finalized all the payroll salary setups for all the employees for the upcoming year. Um, and for July, obviously we have to uh redistribute the new salaries into the payroll along with, I have to start setting up for the payroll audit. Uh, that we have in August. Um, we are continuing to get some FOIA uh requests along with following up with uh several requests that are still remaining in progress. Um, and so we're addressing those, some of them are a little time consuming as far as research and. And I'm the only one that does the research for the FOIA, so it takes time sometimes. Uh, I T coordination, uh, there was a lot of I T needs, again, we had a whole department that kind of needed to get reset up. Along with new hires, along with new buildings, the nurses station needed phones and computers and networks and. Um, there was just a lot of I T component, we had a switch that went down in the, in the um, the network closet that needed to be replaced. Uh, we just had a lot of needs this month as well. Um, as far as just office support, um, I'm just gonna generally say that there is a lot of support for different departments. Um, initiatives and. Um, there's a lot going on, I think a lot of it for June was mostly because obviously Paula left June sixth. And there were a lot of questions from the community, kind of what are we doing, how does this process work, what's going on? Along with departments just trying to figure out how, how we're gonna navigate, and so the first half of the month was kind of just. Getting everybody back on track so that everyone felt comfortable doing what they need to do. Um, and then as far as grant administration, we, I was working with um. Uh, Laura from Land Trust trying to get the Audubon grant informations for the Simpson property that we required. And, and um, so we got that to her, I haven't heard anything back from her, so I, I'm not sure if we're good, I'm hoping we're good. Um, that is a back and forth for a little bit, the recycling grant, the grant was submitted on Tuesday um of last week. Uh, so we will find out about that, um, so I worked with recycling committee to get all of that paperwork set up. And along with getting some supporting letters and things of that nature. And then the um, I was working with the grant committee as well, the ad hoc grant committee. Um, setting up for the information that we got today. Um, and then we still have some ongoing grants, Hud and Steve and. The Burris still hasn't technically closed out yet, along with some of our other little items um. Per um, like emergency management has a couple grants that they got as well. Uh, so we're, we're working with that. And that's, but right now, that's what we're doing, um, July is always closing out the year for all of the pensions for one, four fifty sevens. Um, so it's pretty much a, the first half of July is all closing out, the second half of July is seventy or nothing.
Thank you for the. All right, last but not least is finance.
Okay, Ken. And if it is okay with you, I will do the department and then I'll go straight into the grant update.
Okay.
Um, our migration to Munis continues. So the finance department will be working in two fiscal years for the next two to three months till we get twenty five closed and. Obviously, we have to work in twenty six since that's where we are now. The auditors are due into the office next week to start their field work on the twenty five audit. And the primary user at O P M has been updated, so I do have certification access now. And complete budget information is available. In the monthly board of finance meeting packets, which is, which are always posted online. So anyone has access to see those numbers. Um, to. Go up and to follow up with what um Jen was saying in regards to the grants. Uh, as she said that um, this deep grant was submitted for the um recycling committee. Um, the steep effort, the public works garage, we are in the wrap up stage on that, there is limited work to be done. And we will have all the paperwork to. Submit for um reimbursement and close out. Um, the HUD grant through Deloro is still an ongoing process and as Don said, the front sidewalks are next on the hit list to get. Placed and the two um bathrooms on this floor will be done at some point this summer as well, I believe. Um, in regards to the Simpson property, the Audubon paperwork. Has been completed to the best of my knowledge, the piece of information that they were requiring for payment to us was submitted. So we are in a wait and see and I have. Been told that it could be up to a year till we see that money.
And how much money are we anticipating for that? At just ballpark.
From the Audubon?
Yeah.
I think I can tell you exactly, but uh it's like a hundred and. Fifty thousand.
That's fine, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I know it's more than a hundred, but I know it's less than two hundred.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, you know, don't, don't look at, I'm just.
And, yeah, the, and the other, the other grants, I mean, we, I mean, we find out about grants for. Um, uh, the emergency management director after the fact, but he does submit. Paperwork every year is based off of. His budget, his town budget and his payroll information. So we have those to take care of, but we, as the, I mean, as Sharon had stated earlier. We think the town would be in a better place if we did have a formal committee. So that there is more community buy in on grant related projects.
That's what I thought. Yeah, thank you.
By the way, uh, it's one eighty seven, three eighty eight. Just to be specific.
Can I clarify a little, I'm uh Carol Nambiegs, president of the Land Trust, and so. We're putting together the next, the information for the next few transactions, so the first one was about fourteen documents that they require. And I think that's all been gathered. And then the second was gonna be a mitigation plan. But then we were told that because this grant was so old, originated before the required mitigation plans, so we might not have to do that. But then the next, the third amount of money comes with a management plan. And so we're working on putting it together in management.
If you have any documents that you would need my assistance on, if you wanna send the. If there's anything about, like we had to look at Karma last time to get some COIs and stuff like that, just send it over to me so I can read through, then anything I can do ahead. Uh, because sometimes you think of it.
This is mostly talking about um, you know, being based of plants and that kind of stuff.
Environmental studies, though, you need to do anything like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So they take a bit, yeah.
Thank you.
Next, aim is town attorney, updated on legal issues. Simpson property, one on one legal, one on one Russell and other legal issues. And I don't, I don't know if the other legal issues, if they may have to be executive session, you'll let us know.
Yeah, so uh, Simpsons Preserve, uh, we acquired the property on April tenth of twenty twenty five. Technically, that's when the deed was recorded. Uh, there does seem to be a little uh. I'll say snafu with respect to that conveyance with respect to the assessor's office. Uh, who apparently was not aware of the transaction, so uh the property remained on the grand list. For purposes of taxation, obviously, uh, the town doesn't pay taxes to itself on town owned property. So when the tax bills were generated in June, a tax bill was generated for this property. Prob-. Only referring back to the Simpsons, if I'm, I haven't seen it, but that's anecdotally what I've heard, that has to be, so what has to happen is. The assessor needs to fix the grand list for the last fiscal year so that the tax bill can be undone. Uh, for the current uh fiscal year, uh fiscal year. Uh, and at the time of the conveyance, tax adjustments were made. So that the property owner got credit for the taxes for the period April eleventh through June thirtieth. Right, because that's when the town owned it, so that was, that credit was done at the closing. Uh, and the tax bill that's generated now, you know, the collector obviously correctly is correct, and what do I do with this? Uh, and the comment is, so do nothing with it, uh, you don't wanna give anyone, send it out to the prior owner and give anyone upset stomach. Uh, and uh, we'll get the assessor to kind of. The job on her end and that will just zero out the account.
She may have already, she was in on Monday.
So, and uh, so that, that is the Simpson property, uh.
Can you just, are you, before you move on, the, so the April um. The April um.
Closing?
The closing was recorded in April, right?
Yes.
So when was the tax bill, the tax uh?
So, April tenth was the, we'll use April tenth, that's the date we were, we recorded deed, so that was the closing. Uh, the tax bill would have been sent out probably at the end of June, I would imagine. Uh, so generally speaking, what happens is you, you have your grand list. That is set by the. what happens is you, you have your grand list that is set by the assessor, which lists all the properties.
Yeah.
And the values and et cetera. And then you have the Board of Finance who sets the mill rate in May following the town meeting.
Right.
Uh, that then creates this tax bill that is then printed probably the beginning of June, mid-June, and then mailed out probably the third week of June, I would imagine. Uh, and, uh, due July one, late eight, August one. Right? So, uh, if the assessor has already made the correction, uh, as to the proper ownership, then while the bill has been printed, the tax collector's account. So it goes from the assessor's side through this magic tunnel to the assessor, to the collector's side. Uh, the computer would have automatically zeroed it out once the assessor did her, her work.
Right. I just, I'm just trying to think about in the future, like, did they cross paths? Is this a clue?
No, what should have happened is, uh, ordinarily you would have a first, the first select one would send a letter to the, uh, assessor with copy to the collector, uh, saying, you know, in such, such a date, uh, the town acquired ownership of this property, please do what's necessary to, uh, adjust it, the grand list. Uh, that, that, that apparently was, uh, not done, uh, with, uh, certain, you know, with, with events.
So I guess the closing and the, um, and the, um, recording and the town, the town land records, that doesn't trigger anything to the assessor?
So it, it, it varies by town to town. Some, some, some town clerks will automatically send a copy to the assessor. Because, you know, that wasn't done here, uh, but it, it's different in every town. But, uh, my general practice is to, to have the, uh, first selectman send that letter as the chief of life official saying, hey, we now own this, zero out.
So would that, some letter like that be done like in April at the time of the recording?
It would have been done April, April eleventh.
Okay.
You know, maybe May first, you know, in that period.
Yeah.
So beforehand.
Right. Do you have any recommendations?
Yeah, I have a form letter that I prepared, uh, going forward.
Yeah.
When we acquire, uh, to just, it references the statute and, you know, just please be advised that on such, such a date, the town acquired ownership of such, such property, my, my back block of that, uh, please make the necessary corrections, uh, to the tax records.
Do you mind sending that to me and Tom?
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, town doesn't acquire property that frequently, so nobody's going to forget the process.
Right.
Right.
So, uh, that's, that's that on the, uh, one on one Sim, uh, one on one Simpson, one on one Russell, uh, I'm waiting to hear back from, uh, attorney Ippolito on the, all the, all the uh, certificate taking documents have been, uh, completed. I'm waiting to hear back from him and I'm waiting to receive, uh, two appraisals. Uh, the statute is ambiguous, uh, when there, it says when there is not agreement by, uh, with the owner to purchase. Well, uh, then this is the process and the process of a taking requires two appraisals. Uh, we do have agreement, but we're not doing it by an agreement. We're doing it by a taking. Right? So the statute doesn't necessarily contemplate what we kind of call a friendly taking.
Right.
Right? Uh, so I think in order to avoid the risk of, uh, someone collaterally attacking what we're doing, I am in the process of getting two appraisals. Which will cause a minor expense to the town, but I think are necessary because of the kind of, we're in that space between in the statutory language.
And right. And so you want to protect future.
I want to protect, I want to, I want to protect any court order and any distribution of proceeds.
I think it sounds good.
Right? So once we get the appraisals back, uh, you know, I told, I told attorney Ippolito, you know, no great rush because I'm waiting for the appraisals, which probably take, you know, four, four weeks or so.
I would imagine he appreciates you're doing the two appraisals.
Yeah, well, yes, because that protects his client.
Right, that's right, right.
And, uh, it protects the town also because the appraisals, I, I suspect will support our contract purchase, which is reduced by thirty thousand because of the environmental.
Right, right.
Right? So it protects the town in the future from potentially having to contribute additional monies. So once I get those, uh, appraisals back, we'll be prepared to file paperwork with the court. And then once the paperwork is filed with the court and the documents are served on all parties with an interest in the property, uh, within thirty days of that, of me filing with the court a return of service that all parties of interest have been served, uh, the clerk will issue this certificate of taking.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, what do we do? Let's assume, let's assume just for dates, uh, by August one, we should be in a position to return the documents to court and serve, let's say we'll have service back a couple of weeks after. And then we should have ownership sometime in September.
Is service to the people around the properties?
No, no, it's service to the, uh, parties of interest in the, so the encumbrance holders.
Okay.
Right? The mortgage holder, the, you know, you know.
Gotcha.
And in, and in this, we have the United States of America who has a tax lien. We have the state of Connecticut who has a tax lien. We have the Bank of New York mailman.
Do they have any, um, time period by which they could cha, file a challenge or not?
Uh, well, well, once we return it to court, we get to taking the town's ownership is, uh, is, uh, exact as of the date of the issued certificate. So the town's out of it at, at that point. So, uh, then there is a statutory process to be followed with the court. And for all the parties of interest to file appearances and raise contests, the town will be brought back into the case only if there's a contest as to value valuation. But in this case, since we have the, hopefully two appraisals that are going to support our value, plus the agreement of the property owner, we should hopefully not have to suffer a re reincarnation.
Sounds good.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
You know, with respect to other stuff, I mean, there's, it's a few foreclosures that remain pending that, uh, we're, we're, uh, we're pursuing. Uh, and, and I'm working on, you know, day to day stuff with Jen, uh, on a couple of personnel matters, uh, and, uh, you know, kind of just kind of talking about things that come up as they come up. Uh, you know, with Jen, I deal with, uh, Lena, uh, and, uh, with the chair of the Wetlands Commission and the zoning commission. Uh, also the building official from time to time will call. Uh, but other than that, it's kind of gone back to kind of say more routine type of, uh, discussions and the requests for legal advice.
Routine sounds good.
Yes.
I was trying to get to.
We've been trying to get to.
Anything else?
That is it, if you, unless you have any specific questions.
I think so.
No?
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, uh, the last item on the agenda is, uh, selection of interim first life man for some of the general statute nine dash twenty two 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 and, uh, possible executive session. Uh, pursuing to connect a general statutes one dash two hundred and fantasy six and. Any changes in heart since our.
I'm, I'm, I mean, since Finn is here, I'm curious as to why you didn't respond on to Will's email.
You know, uh, I didn't respond to Will's email because I felt uh, that I should not provide a response. I did call Bob and he told me he had a differing opinion. And I did not feel that it was appropriate for the town attorney to be in the middle of two selectmen, uh, with opposing views on a subject. And I could have written an opinion that saw, saw the merit in both positions, one being a more conservative, wait and let the process play out, another being the statute could not have contemplated a delay in the filling of the vacancy.
Well, you could have said, you know, I, I, I don't, I choose not to respond. I mean, just to ignore the email was a little.
I, I, well, again, in fairness, I didn't ignore the email. I, I did speak to, so, uh, selectman Britton. And, uh, I spoke to, uh, the town clerk. Uh, I didn't respond to it because what I was going to do in this under this, uh, yeah, is, because this is the first time we've had a meeting since that email, is ask whether or not you wanted.
First time we've had a meeting.
Was the first one I've been invited to.
Wow.
So, uh, and so.
I mean, do we have to invite you to a meeting for you to respond to an email?
Uh, on a subject matter that requires the, of this nature, I felt this was the appropriate time to not conduct business through an email, which is with the violation of FOIA.
Okay, so.
In the future, if you want me to respond, we can notice it. I'll have it noticed and I'll respond.
You could, you could say, I'd like to talk about this at a meeting. I'm just talking about from my perspective. And I just think for the record, it would be, um, you know, helpful if you would, because I, I summarized our conversation that day.
You're.
Which where you said, Ed, that, that, um, it's your understanding of the statute nine dash two two two, that if Bob and I said we can't agree on day one, that the process could go on. And, and that's, that's what you said that.
What I, well, in fairness to that conversation, Gina, if you're being, uh, uh, fair to it, we, it was a conversation where we said there was an ambiguity. And then as we were talking, and I said, I was looking at it, I ultimately came around to saying, yes, the legislature must not have meant for this process to be delayed. However, when you research the issue and Bob's position, you know, uh, you know, when you're filling a vacancy of such an important position, Bob's position was something that was, we should wait the thirty days.
I, that's what I told you, that Bob position, because I was very clear.
But I had not spoken.
Clear.
Argue.
No, I, I was.
I, I, in the future, I will respond.
I just want to say for, for the record that I told you that Bob didn't agree with me. You were in the car, you sounded like you pulled over and you read the statute and you said that I, that you agreed with my position. And you didn't say it was ambiguous. You said that you agreed with my position, that, that it didn't make sense to, to hold up the process for no reason.
Yes. And then, and then in fairness to this process, I spoke to selectman Britton, he explained his position. I looked at statute again and I said, there are two plausible interpretations of that statute. And as the town attorney, I did not feel it was appropriate to get in the middle of the two selectmen on the subject. Now, uh, I don't think that that would be fair because quite frankly, that creates a conflict in my office. And I would have to hire outside counsel. So, uh, I was going to raise it if you want.
Just saying that it was three weeks ago and it would be, it would be nice instead of not being, you know.
No one followed up with me. No one followed up with me to say, Ben, will you respond?
No, when Will said, then will you respond? And you didn't. And I'm just saying, it'd be nice if you said, I'm not going to respond at this time. I'll talk to you at a meeting or whatever.
Selectmen responded to me saying, please respond.
So is that what you need to, when the town clerk asks you for an opinion, you want one of us to say you should respond?
Yes.
To the town clerk?
You are my client. You're, in this instance, you're my client.
All right.
I need instruction from my client and what to do.
It's fine. So, so I, you know, there was a question. I made a very detailed account of our conversation. Will asked you to confirm, you didn't, and instead you talked to, you know, everybody else except for me. It's fine. Uh, it's fine. That's fine. I'm just, we can move on.
Okay.
It's fine.
Anything else?
I think so. Okay. Um, yeah. So any other thoughts on, uh, the meeting, I think it was last Thursday?
I think everything's the same. Do you have other thoughts?
No. I think the other group has, uh, uh, started speaking and.
That's great.
Unless we, uh, unless we have a change of heart tomorrow and file a meeting for Thursday, I think.
I don't think there's any reason to have another meeting. I mean, I think, I think there's been a lot of delay already and I think it's unfortunate. I think it's unfortunate. There's nothing I can do. If you, you believe that you need to fill thirty days and that no one can act until the thirty days are up and, and there you go, you have your.
Could have acted within the thirty.
Right, but, but no one else could act within those thirty days.
Correct.
And so that's your opinion on the statute. You've succeeded in delaying for the thirty days and now we'll wait to the seventh or the eighth and we'll see what the elected officials want to do.
Okay.
I mean, I can't force the process for them to stop wasting the town's time. There's nothing I can do, unfortunately.
You're at an impasse.
What?
You're at an impasse. So is what.
Well, we're not at an impasse. Um, Bob is succeeding in, in causing this unreasonable delay. And that, and I have to live with it because there's nothing I can do to, 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 to speed up the process. And it's fine. I'm just saying, that's where we are. It's fine.
Yeah, well, a positive delay and, and if your interpretation were correct, but if you just read the words, I'm just following the statute.
Right. And, and your interpretation is that the delay is required. My interpretation is that it's not.
Correct.
It's fine. And we, we've disagreed before. We've been able to behave in a civil that lies manner and I'm hoping we can continue to do that.
Yep. All right. So that we just put it on the agenda in case with any change in
My.
Thoughts?
Well.
Okay. Then, uh, if there's nothing else to add to the agenda, we'll adjourn.
I, I have a question. I don't know if they're allowed to answer this or not, or if I.
You can ask the question.
And maybe you can immediately answer. What, my assumption is the elected officials are going to choose someone and if I have a petition that's going to come about because.
Well, well, I do want to clarify a clarification that I was not correct in something I said previously about if Bob and I had agreed, my understanding was that that would be it, but there could be a petition either way. So, yeah.
Okay, so going off the assumption, this is my personal assumption. You and Bob don't agree, as we can see, understandable. But Bob and the elected officials that have the ability to vote on that are going to choose someone. And there's only a petition. From the moment that person's chosen, whatever date that is, this thirty day, whatever, to the moment that that special election happens, is that person chosen, is running the town as the interim in the meantime? Which then leads me to say, or a question, that we have the special election, say that person now gets put it out, now we got somebody else in there till November. So it's just unfortunate that we got like, it's, it's so choppy.
I agree.
Is it true that the person is seated?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, that's still, because.
Definitely.
The statute is something that's.
The statute's not clear, but, but, but.
I mean, you can't say you have to wait thirty days because that's what you think statute says and then say the person has to be seated. Does the person?
Well, this, this isn't something the board of selectmen does, so let's just, let's just stick.
And before do they wait till the petition time is up and the special?
It's not up to us whether the person gets seated or not. All right, I move adjournment.
I don't, I don't really get understanding. I mean, the, the, the bottom line is that I was, I was not, I, I do want to say, can you, can you, can you, can you guys wait a second? I just want to say for the meeting that I agree that this delay is not good. I could not in good conscience vote for the person I thought was less qualified than my candidate. So I apologize to anyone who thinks that I'm the reason for the delay. The, the other, Bob's position is it should be a Republican. Um, and, and so, and so we're at this impasse and, um, and I did say, I do think that if the Republicans believe that we know, nothing could happen for thirty days, even the, even if we had come to, uh, an agreement that we could not agree three and a half weeks ago, then why is it that the same requirement is untrue on this end of things? You know, it doesn't make sense to me and the statute doesn't say this person shall be seated. No, no.
Motion to adjourn. There's eight forty-four.
Since I have both of you, I've been trying to get a hold of this for a long time.